I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting of Monday, July 11th, 2022. I would like everyone to stand for our invocation by Pastor Dr. Vince Hefner from First Baptist Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we're so grateful for this day. We thank you for our nation, and I thank you for our town, all of our officials that are here tonight. We thank you for our citizens that come and show their concern and support in lifting up our town. We pray that you bless those that are in leadership positions. May you give them guidance and wisdom as they lead the good town of Cheriville. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome everyone that's here tonight. Our first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda as presented. What is the council's pleasure on approving the agenda?
So move.
Hold on, do we get this?
We need to, I mean, strike five.
Yes, yes, the approval of minutes will give us till the work section.
Okay, okay. So we will have an amendment to the agenda, and that is to strike item five, approval of the minutes, because our city clerk has had COVID, and she hasn't had a chance. She's been out for five days, so don't have a chance to get those, but we will approve them at the next meeting. So what is the council's pleasure on the agenda with the amendment?
My question that we approve the agenda with the amendment as stated.
Okay, I have a motion in the second to approve the agenda as presented with the amendment as presented. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. Okay, the next item is the mayor's comments. Our city has been informed that three million dollars has been put in the state budget to pay for an interconnection between Cherryville and Cleveland County water. The money will be distributed to the city of Cherryville, and we will then do an interlocal agreement with Cleveland County to pay for this project. After Cherryville had sent a letter of support for this project to Governor Cooper, this is great news, and will ensure our city that we can always have a sufficient supply of water if needed. Strap Park located behind the Bean Truck Museum has been completed and looks fantastic. The city has received numerous compliments on this project, and thanks go out to the Bean Brothers on the upgrade and Mr. Patrick O'Leary for funding this project. The improvements to the North Alley are nearing completion, and the new asphalt and the parking striping are complete from Mountain Street to the Mini Park. This is a great enhancement for the back of these businesses and will be helpful as an access to customers when construction continues on Main Street. The city's Independence Celebration was held at Brutusville Stadium on July 1st and was a tremendous success. The fireworks display was awesome as usual, and thanks go to the Cherryville Main Street family urgent care for sponsorship of our fireworks. Crowd estimates have been between eight and 10,000 in attendance, and many more were lining the parks and streets to watch this awe-inspiring display of fireworks. Gaston County's school system was very cooperative in allowing our city use of Brutusville Stadium for our Independence Celebration. I want to thank all of the Chamber of Commerce personnel and volunteers for their time and hard work for support of this event. And in conclusion, I want to offer a big thank you to all our city staff, firemen, law enforcement for their contributions on making this year's celebration a huge success. And that completes the mayor's comments. The next item on our agenda for tonight is citizens to be heard, and if any citizen would like to be heard, they may do so by coming to the podium, stating your name and address, and comments will be strictly held to five minutes. Do I have any citizen at this time that would like to be heard?
If anyone needs to score, I feel bad.
Okay. I'm sorry, I did not get that. Okay.
Someone turned and I told you I wouldn't get behind it. There you go.
Okay, just state your name and address.
My name is Glenn Bratton, and my address is 405 South Rhine Street in Dallas, North Carolina. And as you can see with my shirt, my purpose for being here is to let you know and make you aware that I am running for the Gaston County Board of Education. My qualifications, I'll let you in on just a few of them. I also have a website where we can go to and see some of the information on me also. I graduated from North Gaston High School, went on and finished and graduated from Winston-Salem State University with a degree in sociology. I also have a master's in public administration from University of North Carolina. While I was with the Gaston County Police Department, I was with the school systems two times. The first time I was assigned as a DARE officer, I taught the DARE program to elementary kids for two years. My next stint with the school system was I was assigned to Ashbrook High School for six years as a school resource officer. After that, I was promoted to sergeant and then went back on the road as a patrol sergeant. After retirement, I went to work full-time for Gaston County School System. I was a security compliance manager, and in that, what I did was went to all schools in the county, as well as all of the school buildings, to make sure that they were aware of their safety protocols, lockdowns, fire drills, worked very closely with the local police department, Mr. Jinks back here. We did a lot of work together. So again, those are the things that I feel like will help me to be an asset to the school system. I am able, committed, and willing to do what is best for the school system, and I know my time is short. My theme is achievement potential for every child, and there are four points to that theme. The first one is accountability. I think we have to hold all of our students, as well as our staff, responsible for their educational success, and that starts at home with parents and friends. If it doesn't start there, it's not going to be a success when they come into our schools. Curriculum, I believe in a diverse curriculum. Everybody like myself is not an A student, but I was able to make it through and do some things successfully. And again, retirement two times, one time with the Gaston County Police Department, and I've also retired from the Gaston County School System. Equity, as we know, a lot of times across the county, some schools don't always get the same monies and equipment and things as other schools. I would like to see that leveled off. Like I said, I was in central office five and a half years, so I know what that's about, safety. Safety was my primary goal, and I did a lot of safety protocols and made a lot of safety rules and regulations at the school still uses today. I'm very proud of that. Thank goodness we haven't had active shooter out there. That's due to some of the protocols that they're still using today. So again, I am wanting to make you aware of that, please. Vote for me on November 8th, and I'm telling everybody, and a lot of people know this, some don't know. Anybody in Gaston County that is registered to vote whether they are Democrat, Republican, or Independent, can vote. On November 8th, I've been an independent for over 20 years, and I'm going to continue to be an independent. So that's pretty much what I would like to say to you as far as asking for your votes for me on November 8th, 2022. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bratton.
I want to recognize Mr. Davis. He's done a whole lot to help me up in this charitable area, and we do have a meeting this coming Saturday in this building from way up the two. You're all invited to come talk to me in a little bit.
And what's that date, Mr. Bratton?
This coming Saturday.
This coming Saturday, okay.
Way up the two in this building.
Okay, all right, thank you. Do I have any other citizen that would like to be heard at this time? Okay, if not, we will continue with our agenda, and at this time, it's my distinct pleasure that I will give special recognition to a guest we have here, and I do see that he's brought some of his family with him, but it is our new Gaston County District Attorney, Mr. Travis Page. If you would stand, and all of his family supporters, if you want to stand with him, that'd be fine. And if you have anything that you would like to say to the citizens of Cherryville, Travis?
Absolutely, may I?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city administration, I can't say what a privilege and a blessing it is to be back home tonight. Just driving from Gastonia from the courthouse tonight and driving into Cheriville, there's a lot of change going on countywide. I'm a small part of that change, but you can see it firsthand as you drive the streets of Cheriville and come into Main Street here, and I'm very excited for all that you are doing to promote Cheriville and to move Cheriville forward, and I cannot thank you enough. Our family can take a little bit of pride in that. I'm excited to join a distinguished line of service from my family. My Uncle Ben worked here, of course, as your city manager for years and also a city planner before that. My cousin Elick, who is your current city planner, I'm very grateful that you brought him on board. My mother, who works for the county police, worked with Officer Davis for years. You know, public service is something that's always been near and dear to our family, not just in our job, but also in our private life, too, and helping the community. And so it was a great privilege to get the call from Governor Cooper last year and to get the appointment when Mr. Bell retired. And, you know, I think a lot of folks in the community may have a question, what kind of district attorney are you going to be? What I would tell you is, one of my favorite passages in the Bible, and it comes from years of sitting over at First Wesleyan Church over there by the high school, but it's Micah 6:8, and the scripture is, "Why does the Lord ask of you but to love mercy, to seek justice, and to walk humbly with your God?" And folks might say, well, what does that have to do with being a lawyer or being the DA? Well, I will tell you, first off, loving mercy, there are some folks that deserve a break. There are the first offenders who might, you know, maybe they got in with the wrong crowd, or they messed up. We're all human. Some folks are deserving of a little bit of forgiveness, the same forgiveness that God has extended to us or offers us. The second thing is seeking justice. Our violent criminals, and we've seen a rash of it, especially in Gastonia, violent crime shootings, our drug traffickers, our domestic abusers, our drunk drivers, those folks deserve every bit of justice that I can give them and that my office can. And so, and then the last part, or last portion is walking humbly with God. I think as your DA, there needs to be a little bit of humility and a little bit of that recognition that I'm not always going to be the smartest person in the room, and I'm going to need ideas from this council, from your city administration, from your law enforcement of how to the best serve this community. I'm not going to be the one with the answers always, but if you could give me some guidance, I'll make sure to follow that and do the best that I can. And so I think it takes a little bit of humility to be willing to not necessarily care who gets the credit, so long as the job gets done. I want to tell you, in that line of thought, one of the first things that I did upon taking office was to go countywide and to meet with the law enforcement, and I had the distinct pleasure of meeting with your chief, Cam Jinks, and send down with some of his leadership and to get some ideas from Chief Jinks about things that, ways that our office could better serve this community. And we've already implemented some of those, especially with the grand jury, but also wanted Chief Jinks to identify the major problems, either houses or neighborhoods, or offenders. I want you, as your, as the city council overseeing the police department, to know that Chief Jinks has the year of this office, and it has been a privilege to work alongside Chief Jinks in the Cheriville Police Department. And I take a lot of pride in seeing Chief Jinks represent Cheriville throughout this county when we have chiefs meetings, and so I can't, can't say enough about my support of him and your department. And also, I do have a bone to pick with the Cheriville City Council. You did take one of our better detectives from the Gaston County Police Department, Mr. Dalton over here. And so, you know, I hope you will indulge me a few weeks of court time as we work through some of his murders and sex offenses that he charged as a detective. You know, I can still subpoena you here in Gaston County and Cheriville, so you're not safe, and so.
I've told everybody what Matt Hampton looks like, so they know.
Okay. Well, I may personally deliver them if you give Matt a problem, but no, you made a great selection there. You made an even better one with Elick, and so I can't thank you enough for all that you're doing for Cheriville. I hope that you will keep me and my family in your prayers and my office as well as we work to serve Gaston County and especially Cheriville. So thank you. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain those as I'm here tonight, so.
Okay. Any councilman got any speeding tickets or? We need to take care of now's the chance. No, we appreciate you coming so much. You have a great family, and as you were speaking, I look back at your mother, and she's just beaming with pride, and I can tell she's so proud of you and all your family. You have a close-knit family, and you should be proud that you have them.
Yeah, I'm very proud of them.
Because they're, they're very good people, all of them. And as far as city manager Dalton, he informed us the first day that he may be called back out, and I think it was this week that he said he may be called in to testify.
And we've got him on the docket for a big trial this week, so.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Travis, for coming so much, and we appreciate it, and we wish you the best of luck.
And I also did bring some of my cards as well, so I'll leave those here.
Okay.
Either for those speeding tickets or for, if I may approach.
Just kidding.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
Going through Lowell the other day with my husband, he told me to slow down. He said they're going to get you.
We will.
Thank you. Proud of you. Proud of you.
Get out of jail free cards. You need to get out of the jail free card. Oh, thank you. Okay, we'll move on with our agenda, and the next item is special recognition of the North Carolina Department of Labor Safety Award winners. And if I have representatives here, first one is our, and I do think our public works superintendent is here, and the first one is the certificate of safety achievement, first year goal for the City of Cherryville Public Utilities Department that resulted in a substantial reduction of injuries and illnesses and the promotion of safer working conditions in 2022. Who would this go to? Brandon? The next one is to certificate of safety achievement, first year of gold for our City of Cherryville Police Department, and our chief, Jinks, is here. And in recognition of the outstanding safety and health efforts of the Cherryville Police Department that resulted in a substantial reduction of injuries and illnesses and the promotion of safer working conditions in 2022. Congratulations, chief. And the next one is certificate of safety achievement, first year goal. It's just for in recognition of outstanding, I guess, our city manager that resulted in a substantial reduction of injuries and illnesses, promotion of safer working conditions in 2022. Congratulations, city manager. And finally, this is a little bit heavier than the other ones. This is presented to the City of Cherryville Fire Department, and we have Chief Walford with us, and this is for outstanding work in accident prevention, North Carolina Department of Labor. You ready for this? Tenth consecutive year. Congratulations. That's quite an accomplishment, 10 years without an injury, especially in the work that they do. But we congratulate all of our departments for these safety awards. Next item on our agenda is consideration of our city clerk's certificate of sufficiency, and this is in reference to parcel ID number 203078158391 and a portion of 203074. This is on Requay Road in Cherryville, and city clerk Paige Green has presented this to council, and all this is a formality where we had instructed her to do, oh, I lost it. Okay, eight, yeah. And it's certificate of sufficiency to the city council in City of Cherryville, and it says, "I, Paige H. Green, City Clerk, do hereby certify that I have investigated the petition of parcels, as mentioned before, located on Requay Road for contiguous annexation of certain property known as Cherryvale LLC, and have found as a fact that said petitions are signed by all of the owners of the real property lying in the area described therein. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute 160A-58, the undersigned therefore certifies that the petition, excuse me, petition is sufficient for the voluntary annexation of a contiguous area pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-31. In witness whereof, I hereto set my hand and affix the seal of the City of Cherryville, Paige H. Green, certified municipal clerk, North Carolina certified municipal clerk, city clerk." So this is for our council that they, we are ready to annex the Requay Road property. So we'll move on now to item number, thank you, Paige. Item 11, consideration to set for a public hearing, a date regarding the rezoning and annex of these parcels that I just read, and known as Cherryvale LLC, and our planning and zoning director, Alex Blackburn, will be with us if we have any questions concerning that. That's pages eight through 13 on your tablets, and please don't let me lose those again. Okay, there we go. Okay, Alex, you have the floor.
So at this time, mayor?
Elick, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was on my six. At this time, the sufficiency investigation has proven sufficient for the two parcels and the portion of the third, larger parcel, and we are at this point requesting a public hearing be set for August 8th for the council. Also, to be concurrent with that would also be a second public hearing request for the rezoning of those two and a portion of parcels, as well as the remainder of the other 15 parcels included in that tract.
Okay, do, does any councilman have any questions for our planning and zoning director, Elick Blackburn?
Elick, if this part, they're on the outside back of Requay Road, how far down? That's how many acres? It's going to be pretty big, isn't it?
161.2.
Two acres.
Yeah, 161.2 acres is going to be the total tract. However, the portions that will be, are being requested to be annexed will amount to about three point something.
Okay.
There's two small slivers.
Okay.
That are, there's a small triangle portion on the very northern end of it. That is, I think, .86 acres, and it's already touching contiguous property on two sides of the triangle. And then there's one little, what I refer to as a donut hole right there on Requay Road, but everything surrounding it has been annexed previously, however, this one held out.
Okay.
Okay. And none of this included the grave site that was out there at this location?
No, sir. The grave site will still remain in the ETJ territory, and from their site plans submitted, they're not going to do anything with it. They're going to keep it as a green space.
Okay. All right, so I would need direction from council to set So I would need direction from council to set this public hearing date for our next council meeting, which will be August the 8th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to set it for August 8th.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to set a date for public hearing regarding this matter for August the 8th, which will be our next council meeting. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, and we have none. It's unanimous. Okay, we'll go to...
Pardon me, Mayor, but we'll need two separate actions for the public hearing, since there's one for the rezon, for the annexation, and then a second one for the all-encompassing rezoning.
Okay.
I make a motion to set the date for the rezoning.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to set the date, same date of August the 8th for the rezoning of the property as mentioned. Okay, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed? There is none. Okay. It's unanimous. Now we will go to the public hearing, starting proposed text amendment for building design standards. And we have our Planning and Zoning Director, Alex Blackburn, here. I have a motion from council to enter public hearing. Okay, I have a motion and a second to enter public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Okay, we are now considered in public hearing. Alex, again, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Elick, God, I have an Alex that's spelled identical, A-L-E-X, and I cannot get away from that.
That's understandable.
And I guess you call your sister Emily?
No.
Since hers starts with an E and the A start, pronounced E.
It's a strong German name. We call her a lot of things.
All right.
So this is the same ordinance that was brought before you at the last meeting, and it was approved in May by the planning board to be recommended to y'all. This is for, as in the first part of it states, purely for non-residential buildings. So a duplex or a single-family residential building will not be affected by this, as well as most of your huge, more industrial warehouses. They will not be held to this standard. This is more for, say, a building wants to go up on Main Street just to keep some continuity within the buildings and facades of our city. So that, for lack of a better analogy, somebody cannot come in here with a cinder block building, slap some cement, cinder blocks, call it a day. This will prevent that. This will add some standards. So you can't just have a huge brick wall and that's it. You have to have a certain percentage of that wall for windows, doors, other architectural features.
Any other comments? If not, the public hearing is open for any citizen that would like to make any comment at this time. Do I have any citizen that would like to be heard in a public hearing? Okay. If not, do I have a motion to exit public hearing?
Aye.
Second.
Motion and second to exit public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There is none. Okay. Now we will need to get direction from council to accept the proposed text amendment for building design standards as presented by our Planning and Zoning Director, Elick Blackburn.
I make a motion to approve the proposed text amendment for building design standards as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the proposed text amendment as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There is none. Okay, Alex, you might, Elick, you might as well stay there. Item 13 is now public hearing in reference to proposed text amendment for the RV park, which we have discussed in detail in work session. And at this time, do I have a motion to enter into public hearing?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are now considered in public hearing. And we have our Planning and Zoning Director, Elick, which will lead us through this, and that's pages 19 and 20 in your tablet.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So when I first started working here for the City of Cherubal, we were approached about the potential for a recreational vehicle park to come to Cherubal. As it currently stated, the ordinance didn't really elaborate on that, if that was allowable or not, as a listed use. None were found. Now, there were some close similarities, you could probably stretch it to a campground, but nothing that would, I guess we felt very comfortable holding in court. So with that in mind, we went about searching several different municipalities, as well as surrounding counties, that have somewhat admirable RV parks in their jurisdiction, and went through their process of, to see what worked for them, what didn't work for them, what we liked from their ordinance, and what we could probably tailor to the City of Cherubal's wants and needs. This went before the planning board in May. They approved it. And it was before y'all, y'all set the public hearing, we have fulfilled the general statute due diligence of notifying the newspapers and all those involved. Do y'all have any questions for me? I know this was presented to y'all in June, and there was a few questions, but I believe we have addressed those.
I think we did address all those in work session, but I do give the opportunity to any council member that would have any questions for Elick. Now's the time.
I did have a lady call me about this property out on Anthony Grove Church Road. Did she contact you?
She contacted me as well, yes, sir.
Do you want to answer her questions?
Well, I sent her, I sent her a copy of this draft. And from, once I sent that, I haven't heard anything back. I think it more depends on what goes on tonight.
Okay. All right. At this time, do I have any citizen that would like to address the proposed text amendment for RV park? Any citizen? Okay. If not, do I have a motion to exit the public hearing?
Aye.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to exit public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There is none. Okay, I will now need direction from council to accept the proposed text amendment for RV park as presented by our Planning and Zoning Director, Elick Blackburn.
Make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the proposed text amendment for the RV park as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Again, there is none. It is unanimous. Thank you, Elick.
Thank y'all.
Okay. We'll go to item 14, which is an update, and this is in regards to our Westgate Park project. And our city manager, Brian Dalton, will lead us through that.
Mayor, city council, just to give you an update on Westgate Park. We had a pre-bid meeting towards the end of June where several contractors came to the meeting. We went over what we were looking at, accomplishing at Westgate Park. They were given the drawings from our engineers, the rising. And this week, we are advertising in the Cherubal Eagle, the bid process, as far as state to bid, we may or do in city hall by the first week of August. So hopefully shortly thereafter, we'll, we'll bid to somebody, contract and so on.
Okay, so that will be, if all goes well, sometime next month?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does any council member have any questions for city manager in regards to the Westgate Park upgrade?
That's what we paid for with grant money, right?
ARPA funds.
No, that's the state.
Yeah, state.
Oh, no, that's the one from, from...
The state.
The state of North Carolina, which was through their ARPA funds.
Or not.
Yeah, okay. Okay, all right. Then the next item on our agenda is discussion of our financial statement as presented tonight. And again, our city manager, Brian Dalton, will entertain any questions from any council member in regards to the financial summary for, through June the 30th, 2022.
Mayor, council, I just want to point out, it's great having Blackburn here tonight, because I'm going to have to tell the person that I can remember the people who are part of where we are right now. I can remember years ago, when we were having a meeting with the auditor, and he told us our general fund balance was point four nine percent. And he rounded it up to a half of a trillion.
He did.
Mr. Blackburn was a big part of this, of where we're at today. And I just want to point out there at the bottom, you'll see this is year ending, we're at, in the general fund, one million, fifty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. And we've made a long way. The next fund, the electric fund, you'll see there, is at four hundred and thirty-four, eight forty-three. That ended in a deposit. And the new solid waste sanitation fund is nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And the water and sewer fund ended at nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, five dollars. Obviously, all funds are doing their part, are standing on their own. You know, this is after we've made our transfers and Dixie preparing to close the book for another year and having all...
Okay. Any council member have any questions in regard to our financial summary report? I want to thank Dixie, our finance director, Dixie Wall, for all the work she's put into this. Done a great job.
The water rate's too, too low, but we've got almost a million-dollar surplus in there, the bounce fund in there.
Well, like I said, a lot of that, some of that is ARPA transfers that's been made.
Some of it is.
We're going to have a lot of, a lot, you know, we're running new water lines, we're doing a lot of projects. So some of that is due to transfers. It's not necessarily where you're at as far as money spent, money brought in.
So that's, that's other revenues, where that would come in?
Not completely.
Not completely. But, you know, historically, our water and sewer fund has been one of our worst. But, and Dixon, you correct me if I'm wrong here, a lot of this, nine hundred and two thousand, this will be made some transfers here to close the book, just from ARPA. So it's not necessarily just what we brought in for the savings.
So what, what would it be about? What, what figure would we have if you didn't consider those transfers in?
That would...
Kind of ballpark, Dixon?
Roughly a hundred thousand.
Okay, that sounds more like it. Thank you. And a lot of that money's already earmarked for projects, correct?
It is.
You know, wastewater, you know, the ditch that we're going down at the wastewater segment, some of that, you know, that's going to be up to probably around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So a lot of that will be moved.
Okay.
That's where we're opening up the, the second ditch.
Correct.
For, so we'll be able to handle the expansion of housing developments and businesses.
And that's on pace to be completed by year end.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for city manager or our finance director on regards to our financial summary report? Okay, and this is just for information only, so thank you, city manager. Thank you, Dixie, finance director. Okay, at this time, we'll entertain any other business to come before council tonight. Do I have anything from council that they would like to present tonight under other business?
I'd like to say, I have the citizen who complained about the potholes on Elm Street thanked me for, for y'all getting that done. I appreciate you taking care of it so quickly.
No problem. City staff has worked hard trying to make as much time as possible Friday to continue and do action. And hopefully this Friday, we back through on the lead to the last one, we had, we locked the poll base and we had to run the garbage route on Friday. So this Friday, we have to ask all the tenants to listen to that.
And that's not the only street we've been working on. Had a big project on Vivian.
Yes, and that project has been completed, and the homeowner is extremely happy. He came by city hall Friday, actually.
I think he called Malcolm, he called me. I think he, he was real happy with it, so that's good. Okay, do I have anything to come before council under other business from staff at this time?
Nothing public from staff.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to quickly praise the, the Fourth of July celebration was amazing. I don't think, I don't think it could have gone off any better. We could not have fit all those people downtown.
No way.
I mean, it was really, maybe we need to have it there from now on. That was, I think that's the best one yet. I sent a message to Scott Harrell and just said, "Hey, listen, I want to thank you for all your work that you did." And he replied back and said, "Mary Beth is the one that deserves the credit. She was amazing to work with and seems to be a true leader." So y'all, just, everybody had a part in that. David, your whole team, everybody, it was amazing. Thank you.
I'd like to say, too, I've had several people to comment on it that they felt safer with their kids down in there enclosed. They really did like that. And I've had several to say, "I worry about mine on Main Street going in different directions." But I know it was a lot of extra work with what the chamber had to do to make it happen, but our folks are remarkable. They do, they, they come through every way. They make it possible.
And for sure, I, I know I did, our DJ, Barkley, recognized all the people that helped sponsor this. We had volunteers from all over our city. I know Piedmont Lithium was one of our big sponsors. We had Dallinger Electric. I don't know them all, I had to list them, and I read them out. And I welcome everyone to the celebration. And our DJ just kept hitting all night long, recognizing our sponsors. So without them, it wouldn't have been possible, it wouldn't have been near the success it was. So I'm going to take this opportunity to thank all of anyone that helped sponsor. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. And we'd be probably calling on you again next year.
I'd like to say, too, that I appreciate what the fire department cleaned up the parking lot at the church. Was it any evidence that had been...
And Brutusel Stadium, they said, "12:20."
It was done.
The city staff, they're totally, a lot better, you're cleaning up, it's a lot easier.
And they had the sanitation truck parked right behind the visitors' bleachers. And I noticed some of the vendors, that their trash cans would start to overflow. They'd run and get those and go ahead and empty them and bring them back so they could fill them up again. But it was a huge success. I, I think, as far as in my ten years, I think that's the biggest crowd we've ever had. If you, I, I thought that was the biggest crowd, period, when I left. And I left in the middle of the fireworks, because I was give out from, I had worked my regular job that day, and then I had stood up from six o'clock to 10 o'clock, and I said, "I'm getting out of here while I got a chance to get to my truck." And I started out, and when I got there at the end of Beam Intermediate School and started to turn, I said, "Oh, my goodness, look at this crowd at First Baptist on that hill." Then I looked down at the Legion Hut, there were people down there. I came up First Baptist Church parking lot, all the way up to Main Street. I got to the drugstore, and every single bench in front of the drugstore was full of people. And they were people still up on Main Street watching the fireworks. So I said, "If you take all those people..." Yeah, and, and somebody told me about Aaron Moss Park, I didn't see them. But I said, "If you take all those and put them together, I'd say it was easy 10,000." I hope we have as, as good a success next year. Okay?
I want to quickly, one more thing, I want to praise Cam Jenkins, our, Jinx, our police, Cam Jinx. You know, recently, I had, somebody called and complained about speeding in the neighborhood, and I, I mentioned it in a meeting. And on my way home from that meeting, that person called me and said, "You're not going to believe this, they're putting up that sign right now on our road." So thank you very much for that quick response. I appreciate that. Appreciate what you do.
I would, I would like to thank the Blackburn family for taking their time to, to attend this meeting also.
They stick together, don't you?
We do. Remember that.
And you vote together.
We'll build you a cherry.
Okay. Okay. Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There is none. We are adjourned.